Good evening, we're going to get started. Welcome to the July Hoboken Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone's summer is off to a great start. Can you please make a statement of compliance?
This meeting was being held in accordance with the Public Committee Act NJESA 10.44-6. Public schools and schools established in public places in January 7, 2023. That was the annual notice. Many board members remember the public attendance for the committee in the July meeting of the Public Committee Act. The Honorable Board of Education requested that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those attention aware that this meeting is being recorded on video on local broadcast by the quarter end of the day on CNA TV channel 775, channel 46. The full meeting is affordable oxygenated available on the board's app which can be accessed through the digital phone link. Global public education is permitted to preserve and perform a process and is mindful that we live in a non-fake computer, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants have turned their sound server on topic devices on course of the meeting. And if use of the devices necessary, we would suggest you please leave the meeting if it needs to conduct personal business.
Please rise from your seats.
Let the witness testify of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone nation under God, in the physical delivery of justice or wrong.
Mr. Brown, please.
Here. Mr. Delafour.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Buckle.
Here.
Mrs. McGurk.
Here.
Mrs. Norwood.
Here.
Mrs. Stifering.
Here.
Mrs. Amy.
Here.
Okay, in the summer months, we don't have our student or teacher recognitions, but we look forward to having them back in September. And with that being said, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for support and attention.
Okay, so the month of July, we usually do have to an extensive superintendent's report. We typically will do that in August when we're getting ready to keep the school year off. However, there was one topic that was brought to my attention today that I think will be good to share with the board and the public as well, and it was in the area of rural language. So what I want to do is just provide an overview of what the school district does in terms of rural language. It's not the standard and basically just provide an opportunity for them to, you know, kind of get a sense of their confidence. So rural language in the state of New Jersey is required in all public schools. At the elementary level, starting through fifth grade, and in some cases districts that are broken on K to four and middle school up to eight, the elementary level rural language program is typically rooted in the cultural standards, not so much in the language development portion of rural language. Typically that as the kids get a little bit older, those standards get introduced. So at the elementary level, Hoboken School District for the past, I want to say, five years, has offered Mandarin at the elementary level. At the kindergarten level next year, I should say in September 2023, the district approved a pilot dual-language program introducing Spanish. It is very unlikely for elementary schools to offer multiple rural language options. And the reason is because it's considered a special elective at the elementary level, meaning that it's a related part. So it falls in the category of your art, your music, your physical education, and it is offered one day a week at the elementary level in order to meet the New Jersey standards. At the middle school level, when the kids transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, they then go into an intensive rural language program. At the middle school level, they have the option at Hoboken Middle School to take Spanish from French or Mandarin, five days a week. So it's an everyday oriented course. And it is that that prepares them for entering high school rural language classes. And one of the things that we've realized since we've put in five day a week rural language program at the middle school level is that we're seeing much higher percentages of students that are meeting the literacy standards, the literacy assessment and are earned the seal of literacy from elementary to primary education. So at the elementary level, it's, I don't want to say not feasible, but at the elementary school level, it's more than ready that we would be able to offer multiple options for students to take rural language. It would be to basically triple the amount of rural language teachers at every elementary school. Kids in each class would be selecting different languages. And quite frankly, in part, me or in towns, I'm doing the survey anecdotally today just to get a sense of their part, I did not come across any elementary schools that offer multiple options in rural languages. However, in Hoboken, we do try to meet the needs of all the kids and all the families. So as a result, we have had a request or two, actually two, this school past school year leading into the seventh of September regarding other languages. And we, as a district, would be more than happy to service children using a Rose that is going program to provide an alternative. But we are a district that has selected Mandarin as the elementary rural language with now the new option of dual-language at the elementary level, which we did at the kindergarten level, which we did have a number of families in California. And we are moving families off that pending placement list every single day. So if anyone has any questions, I know there was some conversation that swirled around a little bit today, but that is what we do offer. And like I said, with any specific family request, we always do whatever we can to provide an alternative, but that alternative doesn't necessarily result in the hiring of a teacher or a course. It might result in something creative like a separate tutoring kind of program during the day. You just do, you could do something independently or through an online platform. And that's what we do at the middle school level and the high school level as well. So for those of you who don't know, at the high school, we offer Mandarin, we offer French, we offer Italian, we offer Spanish. And we do have some students that have selected Latin and German, and they take those using an edisier or an edenuity online platform. Very similar to a Rose that is stolen, and they do that for the year. So if anyone has any questions about the rural language program, that's kind of the overview of what we offer. And, you know, it is, it is a fairly comprehensive program.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next, we'll go into committee reports. Ms. De, do you have a business administration report to make?
I do. I need that. Do you recognize some corrections? On the agenda, resolution, the following resolutions, 10.12, 10.13, 10.14, 10.16. Those resolutions have the incorrect dollar amount. It's listed at $42.07 where it should be listed at $46,000. Please note that the board minutes will reflect the correct dollar amount at $46 an hour. I needed to let you know that. Also, 11.17, 11.18, which is the establishment of the ESEA Title III Consortium. We were in a consortium since I joined this district. However, that consortium was dissolved. In order for us not to lose or for us to reject the $9,388, I requested through the state of New Jersey to allow Hoboken Board of Education to establish a consortium. We've accepted one district into the consortium, so we will manage that district's ESEA Title III funds. Consortium was not mentioned at the finance committee meeting, and I thought it was very important that it would be mentioned tonight. Are there any questions?
First, we'll start off with curriculum. Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Curriculum Committee met at 1:00 PM on Thursday, July 6, 2023. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Mr. Brown, Ms. Norwood, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, and myself. As you'll see, there are no curriculum items on tonight's agenda, but we did discuss a few non-agenda items that I'd love to share with you. The first is some really exciting news that there is going to be a documentary filming in the fall, a documentary on our literacy journey that is going to be done in partnership with the Institute for Multisensory Education. And it's focused on the district's literacy journey, probably take place in October, and it will reimburse the district for its time. And also, there will be money donated in terms of ongoing support. There have been some revisions to the social studies curriculum. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion topics are now going to be weaved into the social studies curriculum at grades K to 12 as opposed to sort of the more separate standalone items. All Hoboken middle school students will now have exposure to pre-AP level programming for the arts. Now that we have a class moving into eighth grade, it'll be the first time that all six, seven, and eight have that exposure, so it's very exciting. And I think the most exciting thing I might have to share is the growth in AP scores. So go back to 2022, 59% of global high school students scored a three or more on college or AP exams. In 2023, that number went up to 73%. So we're so proud of our students and staff for all of their hard work. And what they're doing is really paying off, and I know that we're all so proud of them. Also, an update on a couple of new courses at Hoboken High School. African-American History and Culture, Asia-American History and Culture, which we brand new offering. Latino-American History and Culture and People Who Shape the World are now going to be offered at grade, not previously semester offerings, offerings at grade 10 and 11, but now they will be quarter-long courses done during the student's freshman year. There's also a very exciting class coming in fall, which is launching into aviation, exploring aviation and aerospace, which is mainly going to be for ninth and 10th graders. And it'll give students an opportunity to explore careers in aviation. There will also be a computer science and intensive topics of math course. And we do have a teacher doing training for AP pre-calculus. Hopefully, everyone's working on their summer assignment. I know that that topic has definitely come up with my house a few times, and I'd like to think maybe we're ahead of where we were in previous years. We'll see how it goes in a couple of weeks. And there's also going to be an update to the structure at the elementary level of the individualized learning pathways and reading academy and passport mentoring, so that they all follow a very similar format for consistency for students. So that is everything from the Curriculum Committee. We'll get a great rest of the summer.
Thank you.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met Thursday, July 6 at 2:00 PM. In attendance were Mr. Calley, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Norwood, Mr. Buckle, and myself. There are six agenda items for facilities this month, and we recommend all for board approval. 13.01 is the fire and safety drill training, and the remaining items are lease agreements with Miles Square and HOPE. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on, probably the day, July 6 at the John M. Moore Center. Ms. Norwood, Ms. De, and Ms. Lopez. We reviewed all agenda items except for the two that were mentioned tonight, 11.17, 11.18. As my committee reporter will be tempted to board that pointed out, there's a couple of large contracts and payments that are typical this time of year in advance of the 2016. For instance, is the longest out of this replacements. I think I was told that transportation contracts, of course, on the contract are still being developed and they're probably here the next year. So they're not here yet or pending. We also had, it's just facilities, leases, approvals on the agenda, and contracts for these preschool ones. Important is the pool of the architect record, which in order to complete work, I think primarily bathrooms and ramps, we do need an architect to cover this. It's not major architectural work, but we do need an architect to be leased on hand. Should be the arise of plumbing issues, things like that. So that could be the report.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Carrion.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, July 6. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katnador, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Buckle, and myself. The committee discussed all agenda items, and we recommend all for approval. As is typical throughout the school year, you will see a number of agenda items for appointments, resignations, and transfers of teachers and other personnel. In tonight's agenda, this includes merit professionals, custodial staff, teachers, as well as staff for activities, including leaps and purchases for the coming school year. A few other items to note in the approval of appointments for the 2023-2024 school year. One thing that we had talked about in the past was the fact that we would be replacing external vendor, ESS, for our mental health services with, you know, in-house clinicians. And you'll see four clinicians on the agenda today. We are excited to bring that program in-house and have the clinical staff to do so. I'm just really excited for the new year ahead. Also wanted to note the approval of payment of administrative merit goals. Congratulations and thank you to all of the administrators on their hard work throughout the year to reach these goals. As usual, there are also agenda items for the approval of a variety of workshops for district staff. And that's my report for the evening. No, actually, one more item. I think Ms. Katnador is going to talk about the administrative contract, which also went into.
As Mr. Carrion points out, agenda item 10.15, approval of a memorandum agreement between the Hoboken Board of Education and Hoboken Administrators and Supervisors Association. We're able to come to an agreement on that contract for the next three years. As with our HEA contract, which we approved at our last meeting, this contract reflects, you know, really, I think, the board's and all of our parents' appreciation for the hard work of our administrators and supervisors during COVID, and as well as together with our teachers to keep our schools open and keep our kids in school that entire time, which we all know truly paid off in Hoboken when compared to other districts who were, school were hired at that same time. So we just wanted to acknowledge the agreement, and I think both parties are happy as we wrote the HEA contract, which is not very normal, but we have a great, we have, we have a really nice situation here where there is a lot of respect and cooperation amongst the administration and with our supervisors, as well as with our teachers. So congratulations on that.
And lastly, wellness, Mr. Delafour.
All right. I don't really have a report to make myself either. I would just like to extend a big thank you to the Ishoff Camp who made a very generous donation. They ran a camp at the end of June in partnership with the district, a football camp. That was a great success, and they are giving over $13,000 to the district. So thank you very much. Next, we will go into public comments on agenda items. And while you're making your way down, I will read a statement that I read before in the public comment section. Just to remind her, before we open public comments, over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board party, is the board a party to comment as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any debatable comments that an employee may bring against the speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. I also want to remind speakers of board policy. Please state your name, municipality, or residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Ms. Katnador required the motion with 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair as well.
Okay, so then we'll move on to consent agenda. You want agenda or you want public?
I vote your name down and then a comment. Which one do you vote?
Okay, so we'll move on to consent agenda first. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Ms. Katnador.
Yes.
Mr. Delafour.
I've seen on 10.02, but yes or no?
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Ha.
Yes.
Mr. Buckle.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
I vote no on 11.08 F and G, and yes on the rest.
Mr. Carrion.
Yes.
Ms. Amy.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Ms. Karen Johnson.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak on the topic of strengthening.
Excuse me. Also, stop. Please state your name and municipality and residence.
Karen Johnson. I live at 812 Grand Street in Woodhorne, New Jersey, and I have two children in the foster system at elementary level. I'm sorry. I'm here tonight to speak of the topic of strengthening literacy. I want to commend our district for recognizing that many students are missing in core building blocks and language arts, and retraining teachers and adjusting curriculum to be able to apply more effective teaching strategies in K-2 classrooms, and for realizing that other students who do not have this opportunity also need additional support. More specifically, I want to provide feedback on the new Jump Start to Learning Literacy Program, which my husband and I have received an email about on June 15 in regards to our son, who was one of approximately 60 rising third graders who was invited to attend this program. To give some background, I think it would be helpful to read portions of the email response my husband and I sent in the day after receiving that email. Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, thank you for your email. We're happy to hear the district is offering resources like this for our child and many other students who are behind in reading. It is unfortunate that students are below where they need to be on their final DRA III assessment, and that so many students are not meeting grade level ELA targets demonstrated by Hoboken School District's second grade final ELA bracket scores. 0% not meeting, 15% partially meeting, 27% approaching, 13% level, 11% meeting, 34% exceeding. So it is great that the district is offering solutions to help these students. During the last several months, we have been working closely with Logan's current second grade teacher. She has been an amazing teacher and resource in helping us work with Hogan to get him where he needs to be. We have been doing an extra five to seven hours of ELA home each week, including such things as what is not limited to, fast-forward reading physical books, Hooked on Fox, iMyCell, and additional ELA assignments, and Logan has been showing improvement. Our plan is to continue doing this regimen over the summer so he can continue to improve and get to where he needs to be. We have also considered hiring a privateer, since many of his classmates in first grade also struggled in second grade and had to go outside of the school to hire private tutors for their children. That being said, this is not an option for all families in the district, since these private tutors cost anywhere from $40 to $100 plus per hour. So we believe it is very important that our district offer additional resources and support so that every child, regardless of socioeconomic status, has the opportunity to achieve the highest potential and succeed. Unfortunately, the hours of this program will not work for our child. Like many other district families who need childcare during the summer, our child is enrolled in summer camp, and we have other commitments at the end of August. In our district, many parents work and cannot get their child's sessions during the middle of the workday. Ideally, it is best to help these students before the start of the new school year, but for those students that cannot attend this program during the summer months, has the district looked into providing this program in September? Such a program in September, either before school, after school, or during ILP, could be another potential option to best meet the needs and standards of our district benefits. We look forward to your responses and your events for your consideration. We are hoping that through sharing feedback and criteria, we can find solutions for as many students as possible and for ourselves, or in regards to Academy Academy. During June, we were able to obtain helpful additional information through follow-up emails with Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez and College Supervisor Kristi Davio, and want to thank them for taking the time to speak with us and for their work to improve literacy across the district. I believe we share the same goal of wanting our students to succeed and to meet or exceed educational benchmarks. It is up to us as parents, educators, administrators, to advocate for students and to get them the tools they need to achieve their potential. I see opportunities for improvement and ask that the district consider the following. Would the district consider hiring at least three reading specialists, one for each elementary school, who can teach children needing assistance during three days of ILP each week? This year at Grant, ILP was last period for third graders and first period for second graders. If that's the same format this upcoming year, then the reading specialist, and if the reading specialist needs more time than 45 minutes three days a week, there is the opportunity to have third graders stay a little later after school or second graders start from getting a little earlier, 30 seconds. Okay. As previously mentioned, families have private tutors that are reading specialists. Would the district consider interfering or hiring some of these professionals for Passport to Learning Reading Academy? If offered this quality of help, I believe many more parents would select Reading Academy, and it would allow those families who cannot access private tutors that are reading specialists to have access. Another opportunity to help struggling students is Passport to Learning Homework Help from 4:15 to 5:15 PM. I am speaking tonight to share this information before the start of the school year and ask that the district consider a roundtable committee consisting of parents, teachers, administration, et cetera, share needs, ideas, and solutions, continuously improving education and support our students in regards to this topic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Dr. Johnson. My name is Teresa, and I'm in Hoboken. Sorry, number one. I'm Teresa, who, 624 Monroe Street in Hoboken, New Jersey. All right. Good evening. My name is Teresa, and I'm resident and mom in Hoboken. A friend of ours, Danielle Elo, suggested I come and speak to you today about a challenging issue my family faces. Back in February, we received an email about a mandatory rural language program in public schools and the selection of Mandarin. I was informed that there was no alternative choice of languages for this program from kindergarten through fifth grade. The only alternative is still a language program that is for. I am Chinese. Chinese has two main dialects internationally. Chinese has two main dialects internationally, Mandarin and Cantonese, and we speak Cantonese. My son will be entering kindergarten in the fall, and I am teaching him Cantonese. I do not want my son learning two dialects of Chinese at the same time. They share the same alphabet, but they are distinctly spoken, and they are not mutually understandable. Cantonese, my tongue, Mandarin, my tongue. Historically, geopolitically, linguistically, the cultures and dialects of both Chinese are very different. Learning both simultaneously would create confusion, and it's not advisable for adults, let alone a child, to learn both, but we have no choice. It is a state mandate, and there is no suitable alternative being offered. We were told the state of New Jersey does not distinguish any difference between Mandarin and Cantonese, and this is wrong and is educated. We know that it is up to each individual board of education to select the language and how it's implemented. Our family has discovered and is now trapped in this blind spot. We are not here against Mandarin being offered or asking for Cantonese for our son. While it is wonderful that Hoboken includes an Asian language, we find it misguided that the nuances of choosing Chinese language are not considered without offering an alternative to those families that have a cultural conflict. We are asking for this to be considered and provided. We have emailed Superintendent Dr. Johnson and met with the principal to bring attention to this unfortunate and culturally insensitive oversight. To see what can be done to correct the situation, solutions were limited. I was told that I cannot teach my son our language at home in lieu of a mandate as a reasonable alternative because I am not certified, as an app or an outside paid class would also not qualify. And the only proposed alternative would be to isolate him in the back of the classroom or in another room alone, where he's supervising staff with an iPad language program for 45 minutes. This is unacceptable and inappropriate for kindergarten, let alone six years. The alternative should not isolate any child because of a cultural difference or conflict. There has to be a choice for parents to choose what is best for their child and family, and I am here today to ask you to help correct this blind spot. Please help me create a truly culturally sensitive world language program by not excluding the very people it is chosen to teach about. No one should ever have to explain their ethnicity and ask to be seen with equality in order to have access to public education, but I am here today as a Chinese-American mother. I cannot allow my son's cultural language to be diminished by a mandate or have him ostracized for correction of an imperfect program because those with power would not correct the correctable. It is shaming. It is scarring, and it is unnecessary. And I am here to shed light on what you may not know, may not understand, or see. And I ask those who hold the power to create these programs with the intentions to, as your website states, arm the students with cultural understanding to arm themselves with the same. There is no cultural understanding and sensitivity when one choice is in the mandate, and I hope you see this too. I hope you join me in protecting the diversity with inclusivity within our public schools in Hoboken for blind spots and racial ineptness. Until then, our options are to isolate my very sensitive son from his peers because he is the world Chinese for six years. The other extreme choice for our families is to move out of Hoboken to another school district because our culture is not recognized or welcomed here. This is my father was five, my son's age, when he escaped mainland Communist China to a then democratic Hong Kong. My parents immigrated to the U.S. with freedom to be Chinese-Americans and lived their best lives. The core of the United States is founded on these principles. Now, my father passed away two years ago. He would have never imagined that his grandson would be forced to learn the dialect of the area he escaped from in America. So as you can see, this is very personal to me and my family. This isn't about Mandarin or Cantonese. This isn't about one language or another. This is about the true meaning of diversity and inclusivity. A world language program should be about understanding and education for both the students and those creating those programs. We need a choice for an alternative language in kindergarten to fifth grade. There is room for everyone in Hoboken. There's room for all of the separate table. There's room for all our children inside the classroom, including my Cantonese-speaking son, Alexander. The choices of the majority should never outweigh the need to the few. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Jesse Eric, 624 Monroe Street, Hoboken. Evening, board members. Karen Johnson. My name is Jesse, husband of Teresa, who just spoke before. And I'm not here to echo Teresa's words, but as the parent of a biracial child, I know how important it is to inform and remind those that have the power to make decisions that affect so many, that they also have the power to change them to the bad. We are not alone in our wish for alternatives in the world language program, but not everyone has the privilege or knows they have the right to speak of. Whether their child is already fluent in Mandarin or for other children that may already speak two additional languages from each of their parents, the current world language program without an alternative does not include expertise. I've spoken with many parents here in Hoboken, and I'm aware of the popularity of having Mandarin as the language of choice. We are not asking for that to change as much as we're simply asking for either an alternative language to be offered to families such as ours, or allow us to fulfill the stated requirements in another way. I'm asking for an option that allows our son to stay engaged with other children his age and that doesn't use any isolating techniques. I understand with limited funding resources, we can't please other parents in Hoboken, but offending the very people that we're trying to teach about feels fixable and avoidable. We have contacted city council members and the New Jersey State Board of Education, and will continue to advocate with the belief and hope that families can trust the public entities such as yours to do the right thing when a wrong is brought to light. I ask you to join us to change this problem with mindfulness and sensitivity so that all children's respective ethnicities are treated with dignity, respect, and equality. Now, I grew up as a minority. I'm white. I do not have a second language or a specific culture to fulfill, so the offering of any language to me in a great school would have been great and would have improved my sensitivity to awareness much further in life. I have no confidence. This is a form of privilege. I have that. My wife and son do not. Many minorities already have a second language, and how is it fair to mandate a third language that may not work with their second language, or in our case, directly conflicts with that language? This is not fair. Help us change what can be changed. Help us educate those who do not know, and help us find a place to exist as we are here in Hoboken. We would like to stay. I will email you all to follow up on this situation together so we can find a solution. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your overview of the public comments.
Thank you, and good evening. Wow, this is loud. Now I'm getting a little bit hoarse here. Marwa Rivera Soder, Hoboken. It is a special time, why the meeting is held in this building, in this auditorium, due to the fact that I went to school here, and the fond members there have some who are not so fond, but most of them, I've expressed them before in different times that we've been there. But today, I was going to speak on agenda items, but since for time, I'm just going to be asking a few questions, rhetorical, of course. In regards to facilities, I just wanted to, once again, for the benefit of members of the public, the finistries on the building in Denver, I've been looking for any... Maybe I missed it, because it's a lot to look at and miss like, or you get distracted with all the other great things that are going on. But if we, members of the public, could get a little more information as to how that's coming along, when is the scaffolding coming down? Is it going to be before the new school year or not? It would be important, it would be a good thing to know, sure that the parents and guardians would be interested, as well as I was at a Shaysree Commission meeting, reason obviously. And I wanted to also put it in the record that a member of the public asked, because they were speaking of a grant for, I believe they spoke to Dr. Johnson in regards to if that grant had gone through. I don't know if they've heard from you, but they would be interested in hearing. So I told them again that I would convey their message again. I'm not their spokesman, but I was at the meeting. As well as, there are many issues that were just brought up by other members of the public that I believe I spoke of prior meetings in regards to language and other things, as the teaching of Espanol and other languages as Italian and such. I had the pleasure of learning just a little bit of French before I was kicked out of the class. So it's important to that diversity of language, of course, if the budget permits, obviously, where funds can be found elsewhere via donations or something. But I believe that all people should be included and have the very comforting gift of knowledge of their own language and their own culture, as well as shared with the rest of the student body and members of the public and residents of Hoboken in general. So that's basically one of the concerns that I had, and if you can address those in some way or fashion in either here or at the portal, I would appreciate it, as well as I would like to also mention, I didn't have it here, because I forgot the last time. And of course, it's a little bit late, but congratulations, of course, to all of the graduates of this illustrious school, to all of them, wishing them all the best. Again, I had another generation that did graduate, which I forgot to mention yesterday, I mean, last meeting. So that is very important, that they know that hopefully they're, as they expand in their educational career, that they always remember Hoboken fondly and come back and maybe contribute in some way back to our city. I've been trying to do it all my life, because I haven't needed to get up completely. Just kidding, I'm not leaving. But having said that, I appreciate the contracts with the teachers union. Pardon me, I got a clump. So, and the next union in play, I hope they also get equal attention, as they all should. But that's basically, I'm going to wrap it up and say once again, I appreciate you all again. Perhaps I'll see you next month here again. I thank you for your attention. God bless you all. God bless Hoboken.
Okay. Now we'll be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking any action when we come back. We'll just come back to close the meeting, and we will be approximately 20 minutes or so. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Mr. Cavendish.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Brana.
Yes.
Mrs. Khan.
Yes.
Mr. Popple.
Yes.
Mrs. Bird.
Yes.
Mrs. Norwood.
Yes.
Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Okay, it's now 8:47, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second. What call is this? It's common. Mr. Cavendish.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Brana.
Yes.
Mrs. Khan.
Yes.
Mr. Popple.
Yes.
Mrs. McGurk.
Yes.
Mrs. Norwood.
Yes.
Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
Mrs. Engle.
Yes.
Motion passes. And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
What's your motion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.